Hi.
Hi, Michelle.
How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Did you get your question answered that time that you called me or emailed me, Maureen?
I think Melissa was able to contact somebody.
Laura or about, I think.
Melissa did. Melissa, I think, spoke to Julia, I think, was the.
Okay. I can't, I'm not going to worry about these.
Hello. When do the new board members start? July?
At the reorg meeting, right, Valerie?
Yes.
That's when the fun begins. Whatever, that, that meeting is established first weekend of July or so.
Hello, everyone. It's 7:30. This is the Board of Education meeting. We are waiting for quorum of trustees to begin the meeting. So I just want to welcome folks to the Board of Education meeting. You are in the right place. We're just waiting for board trustees to join so that we have a quorum. We had just been on a previous meeting, so it might just be a minute or two before people take a moment and then resume here. This is the Board of Education meeting. If you're joining now, we are just waiting for a quorum of the board to begin the meeting. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 25, 2021. We already called it to order at 6:00 PM when we had an executive session. And so, welcome Dr. Henning Piedmont and Ms. Samansky and Ms. Caravalo and board trustees Sabine and also to the HEP representatives that are with us this evening. Before we begin, I just want to recognize lifelong Hastings resident John Gonder, who died on May 5th this year, and he was elected to the Board of Education for two-year terms, two, three-year terms, and served as both the vice president for two years and president for one year. So the board would just like to recognize his service to the district and to pass along his condolences to his loved ones. So with that, we'd like to proceed into our agenda and welcome Kimberly Meisner and Michelle Greenwald, co-presidents of HEP.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Michelle Greenwald and Kim Meisner and I are the co-presidents of the Hastings Education Foundation, also known as HEP. This has been our first year in these roles, and we're so excited to be here with you tonight to announce the grants that HEP has approved for next year. We also wanted to say congratulations to the three new board members and also thank all of you for the hard work you do on behalf of our school and our kids. So the Hastings Education Foundation is thrilled and honored to be funding the following eight grants. For Hillside, for $5,500, the book vending machine conceived by school librarian Jamie Nedwick, school counselor Julian Schneider, and assistant principal Mr. DeCamps, which will be used across the whole school and aligned with Hillside's literacy and diverse book school. For FMS, $4,200 for the FMS mural project, spearheaded by fifth-grade teacher Jada Dinkins and diversity and inclusion coordinator Janice Matteo Toledo. This mural will build off of the recent successful high school mural project with the goal of uniting the school community by designing a work of art that provides opportunities for collaboration and open discussions about diversity, equity, and inclusion, in addition to enhancing and beautifying the middle school building. For $4,953, the Makerspace Rapid Prototyping Expansion, also known as More 3D Printers. Technology teacher Louis Cooper will be expanding the capacity of the middle school's rapid prototyping capacity, type of capabilities with three additional 3D printers to serve all FMS students. We funded the first 3D printer several years ago, and since then, the program has dramatically expanded. Additional printers will allow for efficiencies and student demand to meet supply. For $1,300, a sensory lounge. Special education teacher Kristen Kumar will create a dedicated sensory room for FMS, an inclusive environment for all students, but especially students with ADHD, autism, Down Syndrome, and other learning distant differences who need a space where they can have a sensory break in order to reset and return to schoolwork. We appreciate how this plan addresses equity and inclusion issues by allowing students to have individual needs met with minimal adjustments to the curriculum. For Hastings High School, $2,500 for the Latin American Film Festival. Spanish teacher Katie Paz will host a film festival designed to expose students, faculty, staff, and the community to Latin American culture as depicted in contemporary cinema. The district does not currently sponsor any language-based film festivals, and the hope is to open up the festival to additional languages following the inaugural first year.
For the district, $20,792.09 for Project Lead the Way. Assistant Superintendent Melissa Samansky will be bringing two exciting science courses through the program Project Lead the Way, a design and modeling course for the middle school and an engineering course at the high school level. These courses have been implemented in many neighboring districts. They are considered very high-quality and will dramatically increase the rigor and science offerings for Hastings students. Pending successful results, the goal is for the courses to become a supported part of the budget in years to come. Next, $7,350 for college readiness and educational advocacy for students of color, all students from low-income families, and English-language learners. Melissa Samansky and Dr. Damaris Lois Lang, executive director of Peacock and brand-new member of the Board of Education, starting in July, will be collaborating to implement programming for many students in Hastings around college preparation and readiness. The grant funding will specifically support state exam preparation sessions for middle and high school students such as Regents prep and SAT prep. Two laptops to conduct college readiness workshops, professional hour dialogue programs, virtual education presentations, and software training sessions, and a modest honorarium for speakers. These programs will address important diversity and inclusion goals, as well as serving students who are financially under-resourced. And finally, $11,000 for the speaker series, Diverse Voices, Diverse Paths. High school English teacher Ross Abrams and diversity coordinator Janice Matteo Toledo look forward to continuing the successful Diverse Voices, Diverse Paths speaker series. This year, all of the speakers were embedded in each school's inaugural Racial Equity Days. The high school hosted Kevin Richardson, one of the Exonerated Five, and the middle school hosted Richard Blanco, who was President Obama's inaugural poet in 2013. At Hillside, they will be welcoming Dame Norgay, the youngest son of Tenzing Norgay, the first man to climb Mount Everest with Mount Edmund Hillary. The feedback from students, staff, and the broader community has been incredibly positive, and the plan will be to incorporate speakers into next year's Racial Equity Days as well. The total amount awarded for this year is $57,595.09. The HEP board always appreciates how lucky we are due entirely to the generosity of this community to be able to support the creative and inspiring grants that come from our amazing teachers, administrators each year. This year has been particularly inspiring for two reasons. One, that we entered this year with a particular focus, the desire to support more grants relating to issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that hope became a reality. And two, the fact that despite having to skip our primary fundraising event now for the second year in a row, we have been able to keep up with our grant cycle at close to the same level as usual. And so, to wrap up, we did want to mention that we have a spring appeal going on right now in place of the big party we would ordinarily be about to throw. And we hope that everyone who would normally be gearing up to come bid on some auction items and enjoy the fun will consider going online to hastingseducationfoundation.org and making a donation to HEP this spring. Thank you so much.
Michelle and Kim, thank you so much for all the work you do in our community to enhance what's happening in the district by responding to the grants from the employees of the three schools and district-wide. And I just have to say, these programs just sound so exciting and will really reach so many learners in a positive way. So thank you very much for your efforts and for bringing people together. And in addition, thank you for your collaboration with PTSA and SEPTA in your fundraising this year, getting, you know, an air filtration unit for each classroom. You know, all the ways that you've stepped forward to bring this community closer and to get through this school year in a positive way. Your work together with the other organizations on behalf of our students is noticed, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. It's our pleasure. Yeah.
You're certainly welcome to continue in the meeting, but we're going to move forward with the other items in our agenda. So thank you, Kim and Michelle. So, Dr. Henning Piedmont, do you have any announcements?
Sure. And I want to thank and express my gratitude to Michelle and Kim and all the leaders of the Hastings Education Foundation because they do a really tremendous job in service to children through the granting of awards to teachers and administrators and others in the district who have great ideas that really do support and elevate and advance, you know, our, our own focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I just want to personally thank them for all that they've been doing and did do in the short time that I've been here. I think they have, they are extremely dedicated to the children of Hastings. So again, I thank, thanks to all of them for, for what they, they do and have been doing. Just a few other items. I want to congratulate Stephen Lopez for, he's a Spanish teacher here. Recently, tenured last Thursday, Melissa Samansky and I attended his Passion Project, Year Two of a Passion Project Extravaganza that he organized, and then he was inspired to, to create this project or this opportunity because he was on the, on a book study team. The first year Melissa and I were here around the book What School Can Be by Ted Denter Smith, and, and one of the things, one of the ideas from that book or insights from that book that he carried forth is this whole notion of creating passion projects, ways in which young people can initiate, you know, ways to showcase an interest of, of theirs. And so in that, in the, in the gymnasium, we saw students who created movies, movie shorts, and it's all in Spanish. He actually had a partner colleague to join him this year. So we watched a, a short movie in Spanish, so the children are pretty advanced and, and fluent in Spanish, so they're creating these projects based upon, you know, something that, that they're excited about, but it is in Spanish. So there was a short movie, there was a research project that a student had conducted on Latin American countries showing the different ways in which they are impacted by COVID. We had a science project of, you know, sort of a miniature, you know, greenhouse that was, you know, a way in which through Spanish, you know, she could explain all of that. Or using Spanish, she could explain all of that. And we had a student who created a musical piece that he played for us. We, we asked him if he could dance as well, but he said that was not what, that was not his strength, but the musical composition was brilliant. So I want to thank, you know, Mr. Lopez for his, you know, continued interest in advancing this notion of passion projects and giving students space to express their voices. I also want to thank the high school administrative team, Lady Pietro and Melissa Hardisi and Nancy Garbliardi, the, one of the class advisors, and everyone who was involved in yesterday's prom. I hear that it was fantastic, was on the waterfront, students enjoyed it, but what it showed was just the commitment to making sure that these end-of-year activities and celebrations take place. So it was just really outstanding. I saw a couple of photos and, you know, it's, the students were truly, you know, sort of, I could just gatly, they were just stunning. I never looked that way when I was 17 or 18, but they did, and they looked beautiful. They, oh, boys and, and girls and everyone was stunning. I also wanted to just make sure that we all, you know, as Memorial Day creeps upon us, it's May 28th, and we have a longer period of timeout this year, May 28th, which is Friday to June 1st, which is Monday. And that's an observance of Memorial Day and that we never lose sight of the, the fact that it gives us an opportunity to honor our military men and women who've sacrificed the ultimate, which is their lives, to maintain this principle that freedom is not free and that they're, they have, in the loss of their lives have protected all of us. So I hope all of us, you know, find some way to respect and honor the, the memory of our fallen service people. And I also wanted to remind everyone that the next two board meetings, June 7th and June 21st, will be in person. So we'll be in the auditorium at the high school, so just mark that on your calendar. The June 21st is going to be a special event. We're going to honor our retired professionals across the district, so hopefully you'll be able to attend that. We'll start with a reception in the courtyard and then we'll bring the program into the auditorium. I also wanted to remind the community of a few important events coming up. One tomorrow, which is the high school PTSA meeting, that's at 6:30 PM. On the, on Thursday, June 3rd, there's an incoming grade six parent transition meeting that's very important, and that's at 7:30 PM. I'm sorry, 7:30 AM. Hillside also has an incoming kindergarten picnic. I know they had an orientation today, so the picnic is June 4th from 3:30 to 5:30. Also at Hillside, there's a fourth grade musical on Friday, June 4th, and Saturday, June 5th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. That sounds like fun, so I hope you, you're able to attend that. There's a multicultural book fair that starts next Thursday, June 3rd, from 8:30 to 4:30, and then Friday, June 4th, from 8:30 to 4:30. And then in that evening, from 6:00 to 8:00, and Saturday, June 5th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And that's a really important effort that's, I think was also at some point supported by the Hastings Education Foundation and PTSA and SEPTA. So thank them for supporting the establishment of the multicultural book fair. And then there's a public hearing on June 7th that will, you'll understand more about after Maureen Caravalo and Melissa Samansky explains the alphabet soup of new funding, which we're, we're mightily, you know, grateful for. They'll talk about the CARES Act, the Corona, Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. They'll talk about the American Rescue Plan and Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And they'll talk about the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act and the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. So all of that sounds confusing, but we have a plan for those funds and, and both Ms. Caravalo and Ms. Samansky will be discussing how we've approached thinking about the use of those funds and how we can have some input with one set of funds that's a requirement under the federal act. So with that said, have a safe Memorial Day, and as I said, I hope you do something to honor the, those fallen service people who have, who gave their lives for us. And thank you all very much.
Thank you, Valerie. And we'll move on to the administrative comments. Melissa Samansky?
Sure. So over the past two weeks, Bryce Jacobs and Kaylee Oppenheimer have been competing and participating in the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, and this is only the third time that Hastings And this is only the third time that Hastings has had students make it to the international fair. And the first time that a Hastings student has won an award at the fair. So congratulations to Bryce Jacobs, who placed third in the animal science category. He has won a $1,000 scholarship as his awards. So that's great news for our students and for Hastings. Thank you very much. Always to Melissa Shandrock, our wonderful department chairperson, who has been encouraging and supporting this work. Congratulations also to our music department for a wonderful Hastings High School Spring Concert. This was held outside at the Farragut Complex Playground, featured performances by high school orchestra, high school band, high school chorus, high school jazz band, madrigals and district steel drums. So thank you to the entire music department. And just to add on to what Dr. Henning Piedmont shared earlier, congratulations to our many high school Spanish students who participated in the recent Passion Projects Evening. I would also like to recognize that Mr. Lopez helped to spread the event a little bit more this year. He did start it last year. And this year grew some wings. So thank you, Ms. Alainer, for bringing this experience to life as well. And to the French students who jumped on board with their joy and opportunities to innovate and inspire. So thank you to all of those involved. The K-12 Mathematics Committee is in the process of creating a rubric that's going to scale and further define the aspirational vision indicators that the group created together. Those were the bullets that I spoke about around the nature of mathematics and approaches to mathematics learning. And this rubric will support the vision to come to life in planning, in lesson facilitation, and also in professional learning. And with regard to the middle school mathematics resource work, members of the middle school faculty associated with mathematics instruction, as well as members of the K-12 Mathematics Committee have continued to learn about mathematics resources to inform a pilot in grades six through eight for the 2021, 2022 school year. And a decision will be made in June about the resource that will be selected. And professional learning to support implementation will be taking place in July. So thank you to all those who are dedicating their time to that effort as well.
Ms. Samansky, Mr. Stewart wanted you to mention the affinity group mural painting, which will be June 2nd, 3rd and 4th?
Yes. So there has been a lot of energy around a mural that's been spearheaded by the affinity group. And, and there has been a lot that's been done to gain input in terms of who would actually like to participate in holding a paintbrush and participating in that mural. So that is ongoing. And I believe there are many participants, faculty members, students, administrators, you know, all, all around. So we are excited for that to be gracing our walls as well.
Thank you, Melissa. Maureen, did you have anything now or you are presenting?
I'm presenting later, so I'll, I'll give my update at that time. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. Sabine, welcome to the meeting. We'd love to hear the student report.
Good evening, everyone. A lot of my peers are taking the opportunity to opt out of this year's Regents Exams because of the pandemic. In addition, for those doing well in their classes, an alternative option to take the exam and potentially not show the grade on your individual transcript takes some pressure off as well. The Hastings High School Music Department had a very successful outdoor concert this past Friday, as previously mentioned, and one of the many highlights was the world premiere of the song The Ocean in a Drop, which was composed by Julia Meinwald, which was commissioned specifically for the high school band. Many students who visited the previously mentioned Passion Project exhibit given by the Language Department found the projects very interesting. And most people enjoyed the wide range of topics presented that night. And finally, the seniors had their last day of class on Friday and their prom last night. So with them gone, the rest of the high school is definitely feeling that end of the year lull. A few students have mentioned that they are actually counting down the days until the end of the year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sabine. We're now going to have our public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to make comment directly to the Board of Education. If you are interested in making a public comment in this first period, it's regarding any of the agenda items that we'll be discussing tonight. Your comment is limited to three minutes. If you could please state your name. And if you're a resident of Hastings and use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen, and Melissa Deliberer will call on you.
Looks like no public comment.
Thank you, Melissa. There is a second public comment period at, near the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to the business items. There are, let's see, 16 business items, and that includes resolution to verify the tally of the school budget vote that occurred on May 18th, as well as the election for Board of Education trustees. Are there any questions or comments regarding these 16 items?
Just before we vote on it, definitely like to congratulate all five residents for stepping forward and sharing their interests of joining some sort of Board of Trustees as we do our role with the schools that a lot of residents are involved in. And I hope that everybody out there, and specifically the two, consider running again, as some of our board members have successfully.
That's true. If you, if you don't succeed the first time, if you're still interested, it's worth it to try again. I would also like to congratulate all that, that ran for, for participating in the democratic process and being committed to the district. And congratulations to those that won the election. I just also separately want to mention that I, I'm very excited for the work. That is, two things that caught my eye among these business items was the grit ninja invoice that will provide some great physical and social learning for the middle school, I'm sure, in a few weeks. And also the project-based learning initiative. Those two things definitely caught my eye and I am pleased to see those among the business items. Is there a motion to approve business items one through 16? And it includes the resolution to approve the official tally of the 2021, 22 school budget vote and board trustee election.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor? There are placements and services for the CSE and CPSC. Are there any questions or comments regarding these placements? Is there a motion to approve the placements and services for CSE and CPSC? I see Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm going to move on to personnel. There are five appointments. Are there any questions or comments regarding these appointments? Is there a motion to approve appointments one through five? I see Allison, the second. Doug, all in favor?
I think we just have to modify the, on number five, the appointment date, I think should be August 30th. The effective appointment date. Oh, I'm sorry. I looked at it wrong. Sorry, that's me. I'm looking at the certification. I got nervous that there was a mistake with that, that one date.
Oh, okay.
I apologize. It was to do with her, her certification, I think, would be affect, I'm gonna just look at that, effective. No, no. So on number five, I just think, again, it doesn't change her appointment date. We'll just change that in the minutes. That's fine. To be effective, I believe, August 30th.
I see. It says probationary period, but the 31st, I see that.
Yeah, it's just one, one number. We'll just take that. But the probationary period was correct. It was the effective date. Because I think last year we did start on the 31st. We'll, we'll get that updated for the minutes.
Are there any questions from trustees about that change? Okay. There are seven leaves of absence. Are there any questions or comments regarding these leaves? Is there a motion to approve leaves of absence one through seven? I see Allison, the second.
Second.
All in favor? As we, near the end of this very turbulent year, I just want to continue to recognize different staff members who step in for one another and the leadership in each building to make sure that occurs as we continue to address leaves, some related to COVID, some not. There are three resignations. Are there any questions or concerns regarding resignations one through three? Is there a motion to approve resignations one through three?
So moved.
In a second. I see Doug, all in favor? We have the approval of minutes. The minutes are posted for the Board of Education meeting from May 4th, 2021. Are there any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting from May 4th, 2021?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We have a number of policies to review. There are listed policy 1001, 1120, 1222, 3230 and 8130. Some of these are, or most of these are directly related to the policy audit that we've been conducting throughout this entire school year. So I know Ms. Samansky is taking over the, the direction, the, the direction of leading that policy committee. So I don't know if you want to provide an overview of what we're looking at and then if there are any questions or comments from trustees regarding, again, this is a first read. So if there are suggestions or questions that we would like to have addressed, there will be a second read at the next board meeting, which is June 7th.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the first three on the agenda, 1001, 1120 and 1222 are the result of the NISBA policy audit. And so just a brief overview, so policy 1000, Community Relations, relations with other schools. This one was actually previously up for a read. And on a second glance, there was advisement around revising the title of the policy to simply read Community Relations, which is more appropriately matched to the revised policy's contents. So that was the substantive change to that one. 1120 was around school district records. This is a required policy. And this policy has been updated in the revision so that the reference to ED1, which is the former records retention schedule can be changed to LGS1, which is actually the current correct reference on the expected schedule around retention of records. And so within the policy, language was added to reflect this. And so that's also reflected as a revision. And there's a technical change involved with regard to the district's obligation to acknowledge a Freedom of Information Law FOIL request within five business days. And updated legal references, which appear at the end of the policy, were also added. So that, those were the substantive changes associated with that policy. With regard to 1222 booster clubs, as set forth by NISBA, the purpose of this policy is to set guidelines for the interaction between booster clubs and the school district. And so this, as part of our audit and our advisement by Keenan Bean, the sample policy 1222 from NISBA was reviewed. And some language for the board's consideration was added, just corrections and revisions for clarity. None of the language in there was required, but it really reflects the district's, district's relationship with booster clubs. And it also clarifies who, whose responsibility falls for what. So that was the clarity associated with that policy. Policy 3230 is related to the organizational chart. And 3230 is also linked to 3200, Principal A specifically, which speaks to the flow of authority. And also to the other attached policy 3240, which references line responsibility. So the organizational chart that you see there is really to reflect shifts just visually in terms of the flow of authority within the district. And then finally, policy 8130. This revision actually includes a provision for the temporary covering of vision panels and the temporary blocking of doors. So as a district, we can include both or either. And this is connected with our safety plan and thinking about some precautionary measures that this would authorize in terms of policy language and memorialize in the event that they're needed. So both are included in the recommended revision at this time.
And Melissa, that also, that came from our security consult, in consultation with our security consultant, that update, which will be reflected in, in this year's proposed district-wide safety plan that we'll be, we'll be discussing at the next meeting.
Thank you, Melissa and Maureen. Were there any questions or comments regarding any of these policies? So that this is an opportunity where you, you could ask questions or comments, but then of course, a second read is at the next board meeting. So there's also the opportunity there. So it, because this is the first read. So this is not anything that will be voted on this evening. So certainly the floor is open from trustees if you'd like to ask any questions or comments.
Hi, Melissa, again. Good to see you every hour tonight. Doing the organizational chart, have any of our neighbor districts also, I think we had about an eight-year gap between we've looked at this policy. Have any of the neighbor, neighboring districts done this recently? And was that at all helpful peeking at that? Or is, are they also eight years, eight-year gaps pretty common?
I don't know, actually. And I can find out. I can ask my colleagues. I, I think people are on different policy review cycles. Some things emerge just based on recommendations from an audit and other things emerge just based on thinking about transitions and internal workings of an organization. So I actually don't have the answer to that and I can find out.
Well, certainly. Thank you for presenting these new, these policies for our first read, these revisions. So board members, if you have any questions or concerns between now and the next meeting, you could certainly reach out. Or you can bring those to the next board meeting for discussion.
I just have one quick question about the, about the org chart. Are there ever, of course,
Are there ever corresponding follow-on documents that talk about these relationships? Or is it always just a box chart?
In, in my own experience, I know that some districts do have a narrative. I don't know that that's consistent across the board. So again, something I can look into.
I mean, my sense is it could be helpful because these charts are always kind of, you know, first of all, you're trying to get like everything on one page. And so, you know, you end up jamming some box over here, over here, which like creates some skewed perception. And then it's like, five years later, a bunch of people that aren't on this call, you know, are here and they're interpreting, wait, wait, why was that put there? Like it becomes this like interpretation exercise. So I think if we could add some sort of narrative. You know, for example, like what's a dashed line? What's a solid line? What's, you know, it's like that kind of stuff is just, it's just not super clear as to like what all this means. That might be, I think, a little bit helpful.
I can tell you, Doug, the, the local expert in terms of creating this is Mrs. Goodman, Mrs. P. Goodman. So she has the history. She actually revised the 2013 flow chart, organizational chart. And she's very familiar with what the different lines mean. So dotted line, for example, is, is represents shared responsibility. So for example, with special education teachers, I think the best way, the best example here is, is that that's a shared responsibility. So it isn't, the responsibilities of supervision and oversight and observation are not just at the building level with the principal and the assistant principals, but that's, those, those responsibilities are shared with the director and assistant director of special education. I think that's a good way to represent it. So you'll see a dotted line in terms that leads from the principals to the special education teachers. You'll also see a straight line from the principals to the, the general education teachers because that's a direct supervision line. And we have policy, which is why the, the two policies operate as a narrative to explain what, you know, why the, explain how, you know, how this is organized in terms of who reports to whom. So I think that that, you know, by adding those, when, when Melissa and I reviewed this organizational chart and had reviewed it previously, actually it was under review when we started. And we tabled it because we focused, we wanted to focus on the, the compliance audit information. So the direct lines with the arrows mean it's direct supervision and the dotted line means it's a shared responsibility. That apparently is common for organizational charts. So having looked at a few of them, there are all kinds of ways in which these are constructed. It's generally driven by policy. It's, it's generally driven by who, you know, the reporting structure in the district. And I think it's, it changes and it does change. And the 2013 organizational chart references a Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And we know that Melissa came in in 2019 as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. There were a few, technology has been kind of like a, a fluid area in the district. So originally it was listed as Network Administrator. That was report to, to Maureen. But, but that world has shaped, you know, our, our technology model that we use now from Lyric has changed. So that also, you know, forces different changes. So we tried to capture that in the organizational chart. We tried to capture, you know, kind of where people weren't listed. Say if someone came, you know, as we were trying to kind of go on this, this quest to understand the organization, the objective was also, you know, and this has been, you know, this has been a couple of years. And even before us, that we're, you know, if someone were to walk in here, how useful would this be to them? To, to understand the reporting structure. And it still certainly could, could use revisions. We were revising this up until the last like four or five hours before the board meeting. Because once different eyes land on it, there is this different insight. Because the inside people see this very differently from the outside people. And the different, and different people in the organization will view it differently. So it certainly is over, you know, you know, it's, it's shut, the, the 2013 date is certainly, you know, a little old for organizations to have the same organizational chart, especially since the system has changed quite a bit. So there's, we've had a lot of conversation about, you know, this flow chart. And some of the insights have come as a result of COVID, as, you know, as a result of being in the pandemic, that you learn different things as well about where things are best situated. So it's a really important process. And I think that if, you know, in the, in a, I, I suggest refining policy 3240, which is the narrative that explains this, which is, I think it gets, it addresses your point, Doug, you know, to really delineate how things are organized and who reports to whom and why and so forth, some more rationale.
So we'll move on to the construction project update and certainly any of those revisions to the policies we can see at the next meeting. And the construction project update has some great visuals. So I hope that the screen will be shared.
Yes, I'll share my screen now, hopefully successfully. Here we go. Okay. Screen. Where is my slides? Where are we? What are my slides? I hate when you get the, oh, here we go. Okay. Does everybody see my, everyone has my screen up, right? Okay, great. So yeah, so I think, um, I think the best way to, to give an update, of course, at this point, you know, now we kind of really can see the building as it's, as we definitely get a good sense now of the footprint of it certainly. And also it's pretty amazing just to see the, the progress that they're making on a weekly basis. I mean, certainly even from the time these pictures were taken, we're seeing more things happening this week. So again, just some visuals here to kind of update you on some of the work that's occurring. And well, this is obviously focused on Hillside. Final building, foundation, concrete pour, we see there the pictures. And I think either, I'm not sure if we've reported out here, but at different points in time, Hillside has brought students out. Our construction manager works with both Amy and John there and the teachers. At different times where they know there may be something the kids may be interested in, they've coordinated bringing the kids out and explaining it a bit. And as Rob has mentioned, he said, some of the kids are really amazing because they know things that he said he just learned at 25 years old. And they know them, like some of the, the names of the equipment. And then on the right here, we see the foundation of waterproofing there going in on some of those exterior walls and the insulation. On the back corner, there was a need, I think we discussed this at a previous meeting, to bring in some additional backfill. Again, now with all the soil testing and things, there was some fill that they determined was not usable at the site and was carted off and then replaced together with some additional backfill that was used to fill in that basement area on the back of the building. Now, we had kind of started with two of our primes or Mocian's site, the, the general contractor as well as a site contractor. And as you can see here now, we are getting, there's plumber, now the plumbers and electricians, they had, they're, they're now, electricians have started inside, but now they're, they're coming outside to start laying, obviously, piping and things under the ground. So there, there, we are now dealing with many more contractors up on site. On the, on the right there, the photo there, with any type of construction project during, throughout the week, there's different independent people who come in and do compaction testing. So that's a requirement of the state that there, we actually bid out that particular contract ourselves. And so it's independent, of course, of the contractors and to ensure that on compaction levels and moisture levels and things are, are being taken at different points during the construction. So you can see some of that testing happening there on the right. Again, the prep for the underground basement work, we see where the general contractor was doing that in order for the plumbers to come in. And then we see the complete underground, so I'm sorry, it's sideways. We see that the piping there going in there on the ground floor. It's pretty interesting. This is for most of you who are, who are familiar with it, the exterior staircase that did exist that connected the, the exterior there of the old, the old exterior roll hillside. It was demoed there. So that, that was quite a job that they did over, I think, believe the last break, they started that work and then continued on. And again, you see the complete, complete existing building stairwell foundation was fully demoed at this point. And that was, uh, you know, we're happy to report that, you know, the neighbors, we, we appreciate their, that at different times where there's been a little bit more noisy work going on and we've gotten past that stage. So that's a good thing as well. I really enjoy these pictures. They're taken from the drone that Rob, it's not me up there. It's, it's a drone that Rob flies and he grabs some really kind of cool pics. So we get that other visual there of, of the footprint. And again, another building footprint after the foundation has been poured, we're, we're definitely really kind of can now envision the layout there. And of course, the front piece of the building, that's really the cafeteria is located. And we see where that connects to the existing building. And of course, toward the back is where the classrooms will be located. And I think, you know, as, as we're looking and the contractors, they, they've commented again about how, how lovely it's going to be on the back end. Or of course, where there's windows kind of in this design surrounding the building and the beautiful, obviously, view that they'll be having from those windows with the surrounding area. Oh, this was, um, we, we have a new contractor on site and I just throw these in. So starting July 1st, there was a new person that was available. And we're really hoping that bringing this rebar specialist on site will really dramatically speed up the, the work that's gone so far. So I just, I had to throw. I had them for so long. So I, I was teasing the guys. I said, you know, we, we do, we do have some help, you know, in case you're short handed. So. And, and then in terms of, I'll let, stop sharing my screen. Let me get back to here. In terms of the other projects, because of, again, we were, Ben, as we've, most of the work currently is going on right now at Hillside School. We, we are still in motion on the other projects. The cornice here is going, they've been onsite kind of prep working. And that'll begin as soon as school lets out. So will, you'll be seeing some large drums being brought into the district so that they could, that'll help them as they scrape that cornice, existing cornice. The middle school auditorium and the music suites in this building, we anticipate receiving our permit sometime in July. That was the last update I received. Again, there was a bit of a, as always this year, everything's been a bit more delayed than, than we had hoped for. But again, you know, again, we're, we're confident that we'll be able to start this summer. There's certain aspects of the plan that really need to get done, especially the abatement in the middle, excuse me, the music suite here. So as long as that is completed before school begins, we're, we're very comfortable with, with the other work that's going on. So, so we're excited about that. And there'll be, you know, many more things to report out on once that work begins. And then also, at the upcoming meeting, I'll just provide an, an additional update in terms of budget. Because now with the, where the design and the construction drawings are for the middle school and, and high school suite, it's out like, it's considered like 90, 90% estimate because they're as close to getting a bid toward the end of the design. So I'll be able to just update the board. And as I had mentioned before, we're still within that original bond scope budget, which is the $18.3 million. So we are still tracking there. And it's, as the days go on, it's each day or each week, we get further into Hillside. Of course, we're feeling more comfortable with that. And then the next, next piece of that will be, of course, the bidding out of the projects here. But again, as we, we just did, they just did an exercise in which they updated the cost estimate and, and that's based upon current pricing. So again, that's important because as we've been, as we all, we, I've been talking about in the construction industry right now, there are some elevation, some prices that they're seeing. So they were able to do that price estimate again. And again, still tracking in the budget in terms of the bid numbers they've been seeing in the last month or so. So that was important for us because that also helps us as we may be making decisions on, on something or, you know, or, you know, making a few tweaks or shifts in finishes and things such as that. So that is my update for this evening. And I know Melissa and I will be talking again in a moment. Does anybody have any questions about any of the construction at Hillside? Probably not, right?
I just want to thank you for keeping it on schedule, on track. And, you know, I remember in the beginning of the year, there were some people saying, you know, we don't know what schools will look like post-COVID. And, and I think it was smart to stick to the plan because as we can see, I think we will be back to normal sooner than later at some point next year. So I'm excited to see it open. And I think people will really appreciate it once, once kids are actually using all the different facilities at Hillside, but also the music suite and, and the auditorium and everything else we're doing. So thanks to Maureen, Valerie, everyone else who kept it on schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen and Joe. They've been incredible. They have kept this moving in ways that, you know, are, you know, unimaginable because of the attention to detail and the, you know, the, you know, Melissa and I attend the meetings and we, we loved hearing, you know, the sort of reports of how, you know, the, of the, of the progress that's being made. But, you know, Maureen and Joe live this and they're very skilled and knowledgeable on the basis of their past at construction projects that they've managed and overseen. And they really have carried this and they have done an extraordinary job. And I can't thank them enough. As the board, I'm sure deeply appreciates, as Jeremy said, all the work that you've done, Maureen and Joe. You've done, you've been incredible. Everything that's gone right and well is because of you. So thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. And I appreciate. And the one thing I do want to say, especially with Hillside, the decision the board had made, some of the board members that are currently on to kind of, you know, pause for a minute, say, you know, let's go out and, and see if there's another architect to potentially design or help us in, in what we, we envision Hillside to be. Honestly, whatever, you know, small delay that caused, I mean, just seeing that, understanding the vision of what Hillside is going to be with Ray Dorell, who's been our lead design architect on that job is really incredible. And I think it really was the right choice. So I appreciate that. We were kind of going full steam ahead and we did take that pause. And, and it was really the, the smartest, you know, step, I think. And, and I really now have learned, Valerie and I talk about this a lot, that, you know, with school, especially as we approach other even minor things in school, like the importance of bringing in really a person who understands design. I mean, of, of course, our architects will say, sure, we do not. But some people have a higher, there's a, there's a value to also considering bringing in architects who have more of a design expertise in, in planning, especially at schools. Because it, it does bring, it's, it's really fascinating in, in every aspect of the work. I mean, I sometimes sit there and they'll talk about connections and, in, in the front of the building. And what, it's something that'll seem like a somewhat of a minor detail, but it's also always done through the lens of like what, you know, in the school building and school environment. So that's been working, actually, although there's a lot of coordination, I think it is the best. It was the best way to proceed on Hillside. So I would say that with all, all any type of project of that magnitude or not even that magnitude, that, that's design in nature, you know, considering, you know, moving forward with that kind of effort with having multiple architects, there's a value to it. Although sometimes it's, it's a lot of people that are like Valerie, then the meetings go on. It, it gets you to the right product, right? Because it's an extremely important build. So, and I appreciate Valerie and Melissa, who also can lend the, they have that lens of the educational piece of it, which is, it's, it's been a great process. So hopefully everything, we stay on budget. That's, and then we'll all be very happy.
We know you, Maureen. We're staying on budget. I've seen you in action. We're staying on budget.
You know, they hate me, Valerie.
Thank you, Maureen, for sharing the update. And I particularly love the aerial shots. I think it really gives the perspective of, you know, I walk past that construction almost daily. But seeing it from that perspective really gets you to notice real impact and change that this work is going to have on the learning environment for the kids at Hillside. So I think it's really great. And it's great to have the documentation of how this has occurred. So in, in, you know, it's great for the board to have this update, but that, to have the, the documentation throughout the process, this is going to be a very useful thing in the future to have. So thank you. So Maureen and Melissa have also prepared a presentation. So, Maureen and Melissa have also prepared a presentation for the board, for all of us to learn a bit more about the grant notifications that we've received regarding federal funding. And it's been a little bit complicated to follow the paths of all of the acronyms that have been flying before us. And although we are pleased to see the dollar amounts come our way, being certain that we're complying with both the requirements of these funds and also the timelines is important for us to know about and to provide our input on. So, thank you, Maureen and Melissa for preparing this overview for us.
Sure. I'm going to share my screen and I have the pleasure of kicking off, as Dr. Henning Piedmont referred to earlier, the alphabet soup of our funding notifications. So here, let's see, can you see? Okay, so we have done everything we can to simplify this into the buckets of what we've received in terms of notifications over the course of this current school year. And then we'll talk a little bit about our preliminary thinking about dispersment of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So this year, we received three sources of funding. The first came to us through notification in the fall and that was the CARES Act. And that's the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. And the second was recent and that was the CRRSA, also known as the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And then the third is the American Rescue Plan Funds. So with each of these, there's subdivision into additional buckets. So all of these grants were awarded by the United States Department of Education to the states. And they came in the form of two buckets, the CARES Act and the CRRSA. Both of those had an ESER component, which was the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And both of them had a GEAR Fund, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. So if you think about numbers one and two, those two sources of funding, we're really looking at two buckets of funding that have come to us that are subdivided into these smaller buckets. It's just where the sources of funding are coming. Neither of these two include public input as a requirement in terms of the allocation of the funds. So with the CARES Act, we received $38,520. And this came in the midst of working towards ensuring continuous instruction. And this allocation went towards the web-based software so that we can continue instruction remotely. So it was used to bring, bring in new things so that we could provide instruction to the students who were learning at home. The two that we're currently in discussion around, both within the district and then soon to be beyond the district to the broader community, are CRRSA, and that was a sizable amount, $1,586,280. And then the third was American Rescue Plan Act, $257,000. So, we're focusing today on number three because that is the one where the sub-bucket is just in one space, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And these funds that have come to us have some very specific requirements that involve consultation and collaboration with a wide range of stakeholders. A plan, a very specific plan that gets posted, which includes a 20% allocation of learning loss, a public hearing. And that will be happening in June and then a posting of the plan. So when we're looking at the consultation and collaboration element, that is extremely relevant to anyone who's watching and within our system as well. I'll be sharing out a Google interest form that will be blasted tomorrow and also posted in the Hastings Daily that will include a link. And the consultation and collaboration process is going to take place on June 4th at noon. And the reason we chose that time is because we thought that people would, from the various stakeholders groups would be available, potentially available, you know, trying to get as many people and as many voices as possible. So there are requirements in terms of who we need representation from for that consultation and collaboration. So there needs to be student input, parent input, school administrator input, special education administrator, district administrator, teacher, principal, school leader, educator, school staff, union member, SEPTA, PTSA, ENL teacher, community organization. And there's also McKinney-Vento liaison and that's the voice of representing homeless students as well. So, so the interest form will go out and what we are doing is we're soliciting people who would be interested in participating on June 4th at noon. We are not going to have a committee larger than 16 people because it's important that everyone has voice and that there's time for discussion. And we'll come prepared with our preliminary thinking for the dispersment of the funds. And so currently, the thinking based on both our data and also what we're hearing in terms of needs of the system. And finally, thinking about what was originally included in our initial recommendations for the budget allocation that didn't move forward. Our areas as follows, the diversity and inclusion coordinator, extending that position to a 1.0. Mathematics intervention also moving to a 1.0 for that position. An inclusive schooling audit specifically at the elementary level and then funding for learning loss. One of the things that's just important to note and may or may not be relevant is that New York is required to submit an ARP, American Rescue Plan ESER State Plan to the US Department of Ed by June 7th. And the US Department of Education has to approve the plan prior to making the remaining one-third of New York State's allocation available for expenditure. So, so there are still some pieces that the state is involved in and things that are moving. There's also some further discussion specifically around learning loss and if there needs to be additional specificity with that. But this is one of those grants that has a tight turnaround time. The initial application deadline has been set for June 15th, which is why we moved quickly. I did apply for an extension for us.
Not, not on this one, Melissa, that was on the CCRSA, sorry. Yeah, the ARP were not really clear. I said, you know, we're suspecting it could be July 1 or September 1. But, you know, because of the timeframe in which, but again, still an extremely tight timeline. So districts, talking about spending funds like this.
Could you just say that again? What do we have to have submitted by June 7?
No, so June, June 7th, what Melissa was mentioning, that's New York State has a requirement to submit their own plan to the feds. I think, Melissa, the reason it's noted there, Jeremy, is if something, if something were to be tweaked based on their submittal to the federal government, may impact or shift some of the things around learning loss for us. But the federal grant is very specific and we're going to, again, remind everyone of the, of the way the grant was, the funding source and the, and how the funds are to be used. So, but then we were, we were mentioning that there, there was, I think, some people may have seen in the newspaper, initially, one, it's the more sizable amount of money, the 1.5 million. It is actually still, the deadline is June 15th for that. Melissa applied for an extension to July 15th. Again, this is the one that doesn't require the collaboration consultation, but certainly based upon the amount of money we received, we wanted to be, you know, thoughtful about putting, you know, putting together that application. Although it's a two-year grant, it's a sizable amount. And we felt as though trying to turn something around in three weeks would be, you know, not, not enough time to do so. This other grant we're suspecting is going to be due sometime midsummer.
Would you say so, Melissa?
Yes, yeah. And colleagues in neighboring districts are taking a similar approach in terms of moving on this and starting to initiate the consultation and collaboration process. And, and yes, there does need to be some very specific representation to provide input. And, you know, the intention is to make sure we have lots of different lenses in terms of the funding. But that is our preliminary thinking there. And under 8B, there's some additional specificity within board docs around what we're thinking and why.
And again, I did, you know, this is very similar, it's maybe not a process everyone would be that familiar with, but it is very similar in process to the, what takes place each year when Melissa gathers the stakeholders together to do a consultation, a collaboration around our Title I funds, that the process, I mean, Melissa, you, we went through the assurances. It's identical to that process in terms of meeting with the stakeholders. And the reason I bring that up is we, as a district, Melissa and the principals and different folks, they'll bring recommendations. So when you come to the meeting, the consultation meeting, there is a recommendation, some recommendations around the use of funds and most of it is dictated, you know, you can't use it for anything anyway, but you know, it's not, that is the way it works. Although there's this process, that's why it was important for us to have a plan, preliminary thinking, you know, in terms of, we've been speaking about this, what we're thinking and understanding the way the grant can be used. And we can, again, as Melissa goes over that attachment, can, you know, remind everyone of the connections to both looking at the data, looking at the ways that these funds are required to be used and why the, the recommendation was made. Because again, it is in, it really speaks to the use of that, those funds as well. So, that, yeah, so, so the process about, about bringing some level of recommendation in terms of the diversity coordinator and the math interventionist, it's definitely in line with, with the funds. You know, and that's why that, that's been discussed at previous board meetings also. And then the remainder, there's still other monies that will be left in terms of some of the learning loss that are, that are set aside at this point.
I just want to ask before we move on to the preliminary recommendations for the use of the funds, which we have, which have been before the board for the last two board meetings. So this isn't the first time we're discussing it. But I just want to make sure that I understand it because it becomes confusing. So there, there is this American Rescue Plan Funds that it's destined to come to our district, that the requirements of which in terms of process are that we're going to have a collaboration process with various stakeholders and an email blast will go out so that you can get the appropriate tomorrow, to get the appropriate participation. And those members will then meet remotely on June 4th at noon to have a discussion about some of the preliminary recommendations and to get input on what those recommendations are. In addition, the board will have a public forum on June 7th at 7:00 PM to solicit any more feedback about it. But that on June 7th, a portion of that grant needs to be described to New York State on that same day, June 7th. And then on June 14th, it needs to be submitted to the United States Department of Education. Did I get all that right or did I get tripped up somewhere?
We're just not sure on the deadline, but yes, it's a tight turnaround time and that is the process.
Okay, thank you. Do any other board members need clarity on that process? Because I know it's been hard to keep track, both, you know, by learning about the materials from state education, but then also what's been out there in terms of the press and what you might have heard from others.
Then just the requirement to have the plan posted by July 1st, that's the only.
Okay, that's the final piece. Once it's been submitted, both to New York State potentially on June 7th and then the United States Department of Education on June 14th, then it needs to be posted on the website of how the dispersment of the $250,000 will be used in district by July 1st.
Right. Well, what's going to happen in terms of we submit directly to the state of New York and then they deal, they're kind of the intermediary between us and the federal government. And that's why they have to submit a plan to the feds because they're the kind of the overseer as the money comes to the local education agencies. But we believe that the grant funding cycle would more than likely either be July 1st start date or September 1 because the two different federal grants that we currently receive with the title funds, those are the two grant funding, funding start dates. So it's going to be one or the other. But again, it is the requirement, I believe, is to have it, a plan in place by July 1st. We know that for sure.
Thank you. Do any other board members have questions or need clarity about the process of the American Rescue Plan money, which is the $257,000 before we move on to the parameters that, that those funds could be used for and what their preliminary recommendations are?
Yes, I'd have that same question again. How detailed do the plans have to be on June 7th, Melissa? How detailed do you think the plans have to be on June 7th?
Well, my understanding is we have to make sure that we are detailed enough that we are fleshing out all of the specifics related to the parameters that they give us. So we've got some options that, that are under the American Rescue Plan Act Funds in terms of maximizing in-person instruction time, non-recurring expenses in terms of operations and meeting the needs of students. Educational technology is an option. The learning loss, which I spoke to, implementing evidence-based strategies to support social, emotional, mental health, academic needs. Evidence-based summer and after-school enrichment programs, early childhood education, which is another option. And then, so those are really like, those are the parameters. And we do have to flesh out, what is the specific recommendation related underneath one or more of those areas?
And we have a forum on June, the June 4th thing is a 16-person committee in the middle of the day. It seems like 14 of those groups are already located on our school district. The, like you're trying to get one parent to join you? If you were trying to keep it at 16 people, you're looking for one parent who's available in the middle of the day? Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, and I think, well, it's more than one because if you're thinking about SEPTA, you're thinking about PTSA.
You're definitely correct. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. But, but yeah, I mean, I feel like for each of the stakeholder groups, because we want to make sure that there's good conversation that happens and we want to be able to do that. And once you get over a certain number of voices, it's really hard to have a really rich, you know, exchange where people's voices are being heard. But we do want to make sure that we have representatives from the different stakeholder groups, you know, some people.
But doesn't it seem the timeline, I thought I heard, is there a June 7 forum at night as well on the same? It's, I don't get how we have a June 7 forum and a June 7 submittal, submittal date.
So we don't, we don't have a June 7 submittal date.
We don't, we don't. Yeah, that's associated with, yeah, could I just clarify something that is inaccurate? So the, New York State is simultaneously engaged in the same process. So New York State is all, up until yesterday, so the cutoff was yesterday, the 24th. Responses could be, or information or feedback could be shared with New York State on the development of its American Rescue Plan. And that the date in which it has to submit it to the US Department of Education is June 7th. So that's where the June, that's, so there are two things happening simultaneously. And the one that we have to worry about is the one that Maureen and Melissa just discussed or described, where they need collaboration around, you know, to, to be able to, you know, fulfill the requirements under state law for the use of the $257,000. The June 7th is a New York State, if you want to, you know, if you, you know, are, you know, interested in giving them feedback about how they're going to slice and dice up about $8.9 billion, then that date was yesterday. But I'm sure if you had a great idea, you could still send it.
That, that's what I was trying to get clarity on. So thank you, Valerie. So that, that June 7th date at the bottom of that slide is really not relevant to the feedback or the submittal date that we are required to have. So, and I just want to remind folks too that, you know, I understand the necessity to keep the, the meeting to, you know, approximately 16 so that every, every person in that committee can have a real voice. And I want to remind anyone who might be participating. in this call or, or watching in the future, that, that those representatives represent you. So if you're somebody who is a, a member of a union in the district, or if you're a, a parent and participate in SEPTA or PTSD, that those are the, the folks that you should speak to so that if you have concerns, and of course you can, you know, of course, they, they would be responsive to represent your, your voices at the committee meeting. But then also, yes, on June 7th at 7:00 PM, there will be an opportunity to, to hear from folks who want to speak to the board directly before we make a decision on, on the recommendations that evening. I think it makes sense to, to move on to describing the, both the preliminary recommendations, which we just heard briefly and have also heard previously at the last two board meetings. But I think also to just sort of, I don't know if Valerie and Melissa, you can provide some more context about the decision-making about why these particular programs or opportunities are, are the ones that are, are being presented to the board as preliminary ideas and will be discussed again with the committee on June 4th and sort of giving us some more context about the, the data and the, the thinking that brought these ideas forward to us as, as, as as priorities.
Yeah. Melissa has a lot of details about this. You know, we started the data review, the ESA data review when we entered, we started in the district in July of 2019. And Melissa took a very deep dive into that ESA data. At that point, there was a shift from No Child, it's the first year of looking at the ESA data. There was a shift from No Child Left Behind to the Every Student Succeeds Act. And it was a way in which Melissa and I entered the system because it was a time-sensitive process in terms of, you know, determining what student needs were relative to the 10 different groups that were represented in ESA that are tracked and for which data is provided. And there's an expectation that those different groups may the individuals in, in the group demonstrate growth over time. And so Melissa identified, you know, by looking very closely, you know, what those particular areas of focus are at that time for the district. And that became our priority, you know, with regards to making decisions about, you know, what we have to do, where, why we have to strengthen our MTSS process, why we have to, you know, ensure that, you know, we are identifying those areas of need around our students with IEPs and our English language learners and our students who were, yeah, had, were, you know, economically disadvantaged, because all of that impacted student performance. And so that data is, you know, those students are still in our system. And so that data is still very relevant as we think about how to use monies now that are earmarked, as Maureen has reminded us numerous times, it's for learning losses. And so I, I, there's no, there, you know, there's a connection to the needs for those students and the use of these funds that, that Melissa and Maureen and I have been talking a lot about, and Melissa can certainly share some of the thinking about, you know, you know, where those children are in the system. We looked at data from, on the basis of an exam in English and math that had been given a year before. So that meant at that point, that school year, they entered as seventh graders. Now we've been in a pandemic. Eighth, they're entering the high school. We have younger youngsters that took those two assessments in third and fourth grade. They are there and they've moved through, they're moving through the system. So those gaps are widening because some, a lot of those interventions and a lot of that focus was sort of, you know, paused because we had to, you know, address the issues of, you know, operating within a pandemic. So, so I think it's, you know, it behooves us to really think about making decisions that are data-driven and not decisions that, you know, have to do with maybe some ideas that are great, but may not necessarily be as relevant as they are to the information, some of the data that, that, data points that Melissa can share with us that she's very, very familiar with.
Yes. So I also wanted to add, you know, one of the other demographic groups that we're keeping a very close eye on is our Hispanic students as well. You know, in addition to African-American students, economically insecure students, students with IEP. So those are students that are firmly on the radar in terms of some opportunities to provide additional support as demographic groups. The other thing that I, I really wanted to bring everyone's attention to is very recently, there was just a policy statement that was released by the Board of Regents around diversity, equity and inclusion policies. And so this, they're very specifically, and I've attached the document within board docs. It provides guidance around governance, establishing a district diversity, equity and inclusion committee, teaching and learning, and specifically indicates the need to address inclusive and culturally responsive teaching and learning, including but not limited to curricula and all content areas, books, instructional materials, pedagogical practices, professional development, classroom grouping policies, practices, student support systems, developmental pathways, equitable opportunities to learn and multiple assessment measures. And so there's guidance that's been provided to districts and, and it's, it's indicates specifically acknowledging the role that racism and bigotry have played and continue to play in the American story. It guides us as a district to consider adopting a culturally responsive sustaining education framework that embeds ideals of diversity, equity and inclusion by creating student-centered learning environments. And it goes on to talk about elevating historically marginalized voices, empowering students as change agents and engaging students in learning and growth and achievement through the cultivation of critical thinking, actively avoiding the danger of a single story, ensuring coherent opportunities for students to actively participate in experiences that prepare them for civic engagement. It goes on about family and community engagement practices, workforce diversity, diverse schools and learning opportunities, student supports, discipline, wellness and, and ensuring that we're enhancing all students' self-identity, confidence, self-esteem, focusing on the wellbeing of the whole child, full range of developmental pathways. So this is really significant and it's very timely. And this is something that just was released very, very recently. What I can say is Hastings is well-positioned. I want to thank Janice Mateo Toledo as our diversity and inclusion coordinator. And I would like to also take a moment, just while I'm saying her name, to add the doctor in front of her name as she just successfully defended her dissertation. So I did want to acknowledge that publicly, publicly. So in addition to thanking her tremendously for the wonderful work that she's been doing at the building level, again, just to recap, town halls, addressing hatred, co-taught lessons within classrooms, supporting colleagues around courageous conversation, content, instructional strategies, designing workshops. You know, when we think about district-wide, the racial equity learning days, supporting diverse perspectives, the superintendent's conference day, days liaising with administrators and parents, providing resources to support understanding, partnering with me and with our colleagues and Dr. Dutra Price Dennis to design the scope and sequence of professional learning. And then thinking about the work with the committee she's already been doing. Racial equity work, racial literacy development, archaeology of self toolkit. So she has been very, very busy. And then when you're thinking about that policy statement, you're thinking about the learning needs of our students and the information that we're receiving from the ESA data. And I do also want to add, so moving into this district, brand new, in my role, one of the first things that, that we encountered is that the district received a potential target status and it was specifically for our African-American students. We appealed and the appeal was granted. However, it is not that it was eliminated. It really, it's, you know, we are still in that potential target status realm where there has to be a couple of years until a district receives that target status, but the clock essentially was stopped. The opportunities to support all learners and specifically in the demographic groups that I noted has not stopped. We need to do that and it's really urgent work. So one of the recommendations for the American Rescue Plan Act funding is to support making that position full-time so that we can expand upon the work that's already been happening and really focus on bringing the culturally responsive sustaining education framework to life. And that would enable the partnership with teachers to investigate practice and lessons, pushing into the classrooms to provide direct support, expanded opportunities to collaborate, working as a change agent around curricular materials and conversations, identifying and disseminating articles, resources, communications. So that was outlined more specifically at the last Board of Education meeting, but in light of marrying the student data with the policy statement, with the New York State culturally responsive sustaining education framework, with the knowledge of all of the many things that Janice is doing in the system, you know, we feel that that is a really critical opportunity. And similarly, when we're thinking of the mathematics interventionist, that is direct, that's a direct line of support to our learners. And when we think about it from a space of early intervention and getting in there early to be, be able to provide that direct support. That's why the data was pointing us in the direction of that additional extension of the, the full-time equivalent to the, to the full-time position for the math interventionist at Hillside. And then finally, when we're thinking about inclusive schools and, and that audit, you know, there was, I'm sorry, program review, I just want to use the right terminology, that program review happened at FMS and you know, and it resulted in some decision-making based on the data around next steps for the system. What we've been able to find is that of the 17 students that moved from the special class, once that special class was dissolved and they're no longer in a special class environment, they're in an integrated setting. You know, we're seeing, we're seeing averages that are, are quite robust in terms of ELA, 85% in terms of mathematics, 87.7%. You know, we're seeing early indicators around interest in learning about inclusive environments. We recently had over 30 teachers participating in a book club together. So we're seeing the impact of what can happen. When we dig deeply, we put a lens on something and, and we learn more closely. You know, I, I'm thinking of a fable, it's been on my mind about how I think it's, the name of the fable is The Blind Men and the Elephant, I believe. And I, it, the reason that I bring it up is that each of us in our own unique roles, when, when we are approaching the elephant, so to speak, we are, we are approaching a piece of the elephant and having the opportunity from someone from the outside to come in and really look broadly. And, and as, as someone looking at all of the moving systemic pieces without the particular lens that's associated with our own role. It provides a very deep and comprehensive look and it gives us the chance to say where are the bright spots and where are the opportunities? So that's another reason to make sure that we're supporting, of course, our students with IEPs and our educators and our administrators to make sure that we're doing absolutely all that we can to be growing and moving and to enhancing our systems.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any questions or comments about the preliminary recommendations from the board members this evening?
Yeah, I just, you know, I'd fully support the full-time position for Dr. Janice Mateo Toledo. Congratulations, Janice. I see you're on the meeting here. And, you know, we've been receiving not a lot, but a few notes around this idea of teaching critical race theory. And it's, you know, you search kind of any major publication in the country over the last few weeks and it's a hot topic, it's a big topic. And yeah, I think however the curriculum rolls out, it's going to be important to kind of talk about, I think, that distinction and make sure that we don't step over it to better understand kind of the polarization around the process and how we're thinking about education and curriculum and pedagogy around these topics. It's obviously not an easy set of topics to discuss. And I know we've heard from some people in town that that framing with those words, critical race theory is problematic. I, you know, don't, I, I don't necessarily have a specific opinion on it. I think as, as anything, things get tied up with simple words that become distilled and simplified and there's a lot more complexity to these issues. But to continue to really critically think about how we're framing these topics and more importantly, how we're continuing to integrate them so that they're not standalone topics, they're integrated throughout the curriculum in a variety of ways, which I think in many ways, we've been doing for a number of years already, and there's still a variety of work to be done. You know, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's not only a topic that's on some people in this towns mind, but it's on the kind of the public's mind. It's obviously getting very polarized along partisan lines. And, you know, to acknowledge that and to make sure that we're thinking about what does that actually mean? And how do we talk about that as we move forward? So it's a big topic. It's not one where we want to get into a heavily, a heavy debate right now, but I think you know, this is, this is hard work. It's been hard work for a long time. It's going to continue to be hard work. I don't think we can shy away from that. But I just wanted to kind of raise that point.
I, I have two things. I mean, I think in terms of the Regent's statement and policy statement regarding diversity, equity and inclusion work, I think Hastings is really well-positioned to be far beyond where a lot of districts are going to be starting from. And I think, you know, I think with the leadership of our Director of Diversity and Inclusion, you know, she, she really comes with the kinds of sound pedagogical work that she's, you know, just received her doctorate and you know, from Columbia. And I think really does come to us with the real kind of educationally and child-appropriate approaches. And of course, you know, the community will, you know, has always had an opportunity to be involved in various ways through the diversity committee to participate in, in framing how, how this work is played out throughout the districts. I only imagine that will continue further. The, 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 the only other piece that I want us to think about in terms of any monies that might remain in terms of the learning loss, because I, I hear that there might be some funds that are not yet positioned within those that you've already mentioned, is to think about the, the students who are current first graders and second graders. Because we heard a lot from the community about their learning losses throughout the pandemic. And we don't have ESA data on those children. So they're not, they're not students that we've been tracking or seeing through the system, but certainly there was, you know, the universal screener that was done with all students throughout the district and teachers do ongoing assessments throughout their years in elementary. So it would be, I think, important to see if there, it's just to look, potentially there isn't a concern, but perhaps that's a population that needs to be addressed because we did hear continuously from families within those two grade levels, the current first graders and second graders who really had, you know, sort of nine months of, of real jumbled learning. And, 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 you know, at an age where it was really challenging to experience a remote learning program that was meeting their needs. So I, I think, I think it would be important to perhaps look at that population as well.
And that is, I think, a really important point, Lauren. And I know that the first administration of the universal screener, you know, to comply with the, you know, laws under MTSS or RTI would be in September. So that will, that, you know, that would be the first time that the universal screener would be administered to be, to restart the cycle for next year. And that's done for three years, I mean, for three years, three times a year. I think that would be real, that, that would be the time, I think, to really consider from the standpoint of that data, what kinds from the standpoint of that data, what kinds of programming, what kinds of programs could be developed, you know, before the start of the day, at the end of the day, you know, perhaps in conjunction with some of the service providers that, that, you know, offer programs. They're both, you know, social, emotional, as well as academic. So I think that would be a really good opportunity for partnership that some of these funds could certainly support. I think that would be, you know, in the district's best interests, you know, to consider, you know, within the planning. And I know this is on very much in, you know, and Melissa's, you know, bank of ideas, you know, to, to promote and advocate for that kind of collaboration and to be able to pinpoint using the universal screener in reading and math at the elementary level to be able to, to, to catch up with where children are who, you know, were not, you know, were, were at a loss from March to, to June and then from September. You know, it kind of eventually kind of became more normal in terms of schooling. But, you know, that's pretty disruptive. And so I, 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 I support that as a, as a priority as well moving forward. I also wanted to mention and thank Dr. Mateo Toledo for really keeping the Diversity Committee moving forward because part of the Regent's Policy Initiative or their Diversity and Equity Inclusion Initiative is to have established a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. So that's really important and that's, that, that, you know, consists of stakeholders and students. And so I think that, you know, through her, you know, her, you know, sort of constant nurturance and, and, you know, and, and, you know, really targeting the committee to be a resource, you know, for the system, you know, truly can be strengthened through, you know, a policy that the district, you know, creates. And therefore, you know, with the, the framework that's already been established, Dr. Mateo Toledo will be able to continue the work of the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee. There's also, I keep mentioning at one or two meetings before, an initiative that some of the teachers in the district had already started, which was a crossing borders partnership with a district in New York City. And that effort through the urging of trustee Arnon led to a collaboration with Yonkers, with the Yonkers City School District. So those teachers, you know, will be working with the school district. And there is someone who, superintendent already identified in Yonkers, who will be the partner to, to the teachers here in, in the school district. And I think it would be a great opportunity for Dr. Mateo Toledo to support the growth of that, that partnership in, in being able to, you know, have students who share the same border and they are neighbors who don't necessarily have access, you know, access to each other's assets. And therefore, you know, there are really no tangible, authentic ways for them to get to know each other. They just know they share the border and in a couple of cases, share the same zip code and yet don't really come in contact with each other. So I applaud the teachers here who have been doing that work previously and were very interested in being a part of this effort called Our Neighbors. And, and I look forward to Dr. Mateo later, you know, supporting the, the, the growth of that, that initiative.
Lauren, I just want to also mention again, we, we've been, obviously, this evening's discussion is really focused, as it needed to, on the American Rescue Plan Act. But in terms of learning loss, the, the other $1.5 million there is also like set-asides that will be directly put toward that as well. So I think, and, and as we've, well, we know that both of these grants run over two fiscal years. So I think there will be an opportunity, like as Valerie said, with next year and the screeners, there's, you know, money both set aside in the current 20% holdback. I think it's above $50,000 in the American Rescue Plan, as well as the other, the other, the CRSA, that we also will have monies available to us if, if needed next year.
Thank you, Maureen. I, I think it could, you know, it, it can cross two things too, because I believe one of the other categories is early childhood. And I don't know if they qualify that as K through two. So I think, you know, potentially there could be something there as well.
Oh, and not related to this, but one of the things we are doing, because we did have an allocation, it's unrelated to this, but just thinking, it's actually earlier childhood education. We did have a sub-grant for all districts receive some money under universal pre-K. And I'm going to issue an RFP to see whether we can secure. It would be probably more like a lottery system. That's how the districts have done it. So we're going to see if, if, and if not for this year, possibly next year, if we do it, if we could possibly, we wouldn't run it ourselves, of course. Schools like ours are, are looking to either secure placement for students. Say if we were able to afford, just making up 20 spots or so. And then if, if we, if we are able to do so, then we would look to, to, you know, establish some type of lottery system for awarding those. But again, it addresses learning loss as well for those students who may have normally gone to pre-K last year.
Thank you. That's an interesting development.
Kind of new, because this was, you know, with getting those allocations, a lot of districts like Hastings and other districts that don't have it or had been looking at ways to see if there's a way we could access those funds to, 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 you know, potentially offer those. Again, we don't know, but that's something. But again, there's, there's different, there's all these different buckets of money that are out there. We're trying to, you know, flush through them all at the same time.
Melissa and Maureen, one of the recommendations was for professional development, the Hillside Review from the IS Inclusive Schooling. Is there a number you can put on that? How much are we spending? Is that over two years, one year? What's the, you know, the other recommendations? We can pretty much figure out from our salary grid, .8 to .8 to 1.0. What are we talking about with IS?
Melissa, what, do you want me to?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm going to just look, because I'm afraid of giving a wrong number here. The minute, the one at the middle school, Maureen, do you have that at your fingertips in terms of that one? I'll, I'm searching as well.
I think the RFP that we issued was for like, what, 20, 29,000 or some, somewhere in that neighborhood? That included the?
It was a little bit over that, you're right. It was over the 25, so I think it was in or around that neighborhood. And, yes, I mean, again, so you figure somewhere in that neighborhood, Jeremy, I think 25 to 30 is a good range to, that that would be. I have to see if I?
No, that's close enough. We're not, that's in the ballpark. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Was that for two years or the one year?
It was a one-year program review. And then any work to support the implementation of the recommendations from the program review were extra. So those were, you know, very, you know, whatever those recommendations were, one of the recommendations was to, to create the position of inclusion facilitator for the middle school. So it depends on the recommendations from the actual review at Hillside that will drive, you know, what the, what, what professional learning or other kinds of, of needs, you know, may be identified.
Doug mentioned it early on, we're not looking to have a large debate right here, but it does seem like this is a business item. So my general feel is this is not how we should be adding to our budget. And I've, I don't think, I think we've looked at budgets and we vote on budget as a town. This is a temporary grant. So we saw a letter-writing campaign just when the community was using a slightly misinformed, when our position was staying at .6 and not even increasing. So I don't see how this is the right venue to add a, you know, add to a 1.0 full-time position. This is not a position that's going to be cut when the grant ends. This is a budget item. The grant sourcing, I think, can be looked at in other ways. And I think all the board members know here that Maureen and Valerie's department has been not fully staffed and they are working and working and working. This might not be the time to try to look at this tonight. This is a salary increase, a budget increase that we are looking at on a temporary funding source that could easily be directed in other ways. There are not a lot of limitations that I see when I look at this. So I'm excited that Maureen and Valerie's departments have $1.5 million that they are working, trying to figure out how much of that can cover our funding from the past. We spent a lot of money. There is a lot going on right now. So this feels like a backdoor budget increase. It is going to be with us for a long time. Last time we brought in IS and it's, it's got some positive reviews from our special education administrators, we ended up with an FMS facility inclusion, another six-figure position. You don't find that in any other school districts. So this does not, this does not feel like the right time to be looking at this. It's a small part of our grants. It's not our main focus. I know we've got some big focuses on a very small administrator finance department there. This one's not going away. You approve stuff like this. You've just added another administrator to our budget. And I think that's not where I want to represent the residents of this community. So I have some concerns with these recommendations, but not going to look to pull it out right now. We have other priorities that we're looking at, some very pressing ones. We got three new board members coming online. We've got July 1st leadership change coming up. So unless other people are all another six to one vote coming, I stand.
In terms of process, it was decided that after the June 4th committee consultation, that will include representation across the district and then the forum that will be at 7:00 PM on, on the next board meeting on June 7th, that the board will have an opportunity to weigh in with an approval or nod of the recommendations that gel from that group and, and come before us again. So, you know, I, I think sharing your points of view is, is important at this point. You know, I can state personally that I, I support expanding the position of the diversity coordinator to 1.0 through these funds. I think it's very timely that we receive a mandate of policy from the Regents of New York that require us to really provide that type of leadership within the district. And yes, I agree that likely it would be an, an added position after those two years. But I think, you know, I think that that work is significant and only going to grow within those two years. And New York is not going to rescind its policy of, of having that included within our district. So, you know, I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's one that, yes, it was discussed as part of the original budget for this school year. And I think we're in a fortunate place that we're able to justify its inclusion within this grant so that we can have not, not have it be within the operating budget within two years. I think that's fortuitous. But I think there will be, I agree that there will be a point with, within, after those two years where it will have to be under consideration to be within the budget or not. But New York's recommendations are certainly only going to grow and not go away on this material.
Yeah, we've heard that before. I think we are so far ahead of the New York recommendations. You know, the New York recommendations, even the last paragraph is talking about underfunded school districts. That's not us. That's not the huge disparity in equity. We are an overfunded district. New York City is the highest funded big city district at 26,000. We are the benefits of being better than that. We are 33,000 per student. We are so far ahead with our 0.6 position in our FMS inclusion facilitator and our very well-staffed special education department. We are going to do a review of Hillside. Maybe that would lead to a recommendation for a Hillside facility inclusion facilitator. That is, that is DEI. Our district is years ahead of these recommendations that are being put out by the New York State Regents. We are not being required to do more. We are being offered money for different things. This is not the, this is not the, not something that I'm excited about.
I know we'll be talking more about this, but just based on what Melissa Mansky was saying about, you know, our, our statistical numbers from the ESSA data gathered, we really did have work to do. And that involved hiring the inclusion facilitator for the middle school in order to, to bring us back from the, the cusp of being designated as a school that needs improvement in the middle school. That was part of that turnaround and also the push to try something different from what we've been doing in order to bring some other scores up. So I think the feeling was we can't stay the same. We got to try and stretch a little bit. Not that we were doing horribly before, but that, hey, we've got to, we've got to bring this achievement up. What can we do? Let's try this other thing. And I don't think you can ignore that. So because of that, I, I do feel like those are important pushes in bringing our achievement gaps and getting rid of those achievement gaps.
I definitely appreciate other people's experiences and perspectives. I'll let you know that we all know that phrase, statistics get a pretty bad name. Whether they're damn lies or just lies, they don't go up too much better than that. So a lot of those categories for a small district like ours are quite suspect. You get 50% opting out of a test. You've changed your categories on any of our small focus groups. I can tell you, my own school, which has a very small Asian population, we had one student who, when he moved on from eighth grade to ninth grade, our numbers for attendance on a subgroup became a focus area. We have numbers that small that when you get concerning numbers, you have to look deeper because statistics can be not as important as a category group when you know in general how you're doing, whether you are providing education to all in an inclusive environment and an equitable environment with a great focus on diversity and progress and change. 0.6 has been just a recent amount. You can't look at last year, that's not a regular year. We could be looking at a lot of other ways. We can't just keep going from point two to point six and then try to evaluate it during a COVID year, during an opt-out year for our subcategories that are teeny. These are statistics that occasionally need to be looked at in a different light.
I mean, I'm personally still willing to invest that money, I think, even if it does become part of the budget. Yeah, these are, these are complex, very critical issues that have been around for so long. And these are not things that are easily integrated into a way of thinking about the world. I mean, I think, you know, let's be honest about what's going on here, which is, how we pay for it is a question. And, and I don't disagree, Jeremy, with you on that point. And we've got to look at a variety of things. I mean, 33,000, and I don't know if, maybe you researched that number. I, I don't know the actual number, 26? I, I don't know the actual number, 26K New York City, sounds like, you know, 33K in ours. And, uh, I, I don't disagree that that's a big number. I think we have to think about how those funds are being allocated. And I think it's somewhat unfair to point to one position. I think there's a variety of places we have to continue. And you've talked a lot about this, and I think it's important to continue to talk about, you know, New York State is by far the highest per child, state in the country when it comes to education. And our, and Westchester County is, um, some of the highest in New York State. And so I think we do have to look at critical ways. But I think to peg it all on this position, um, uh, is kind of a narrow way to think about it. And I do see a variety, I, I think whether, I, I'll just say that I think one of the things we need to get better at as a district, I think we're improving and we need to continue to improve at this, is assessing the efficacy of all programs that we're doing. And it's not just about, um, a diversity inclusion coordinator. It's not just about any one department. I think it's about curriculum in general, what's working, what's not. We've got to continue to look programmatically. It's only been a couple of years Melissa's been here. We haven't had that role. And, you know, Melissa and I have spoken about this as well. You know, I think that all these budgets, every educational budget, every public budget has a way of just growing. It just gets things glommed onto it continually. We've got to continually look at that stuff. And I think, I think program reviews, I think clearly identifying what is effective, what isn't, having those conversations. I think thinking through how we're statistically measuring efficacy is, is important. These are all really important conversations to have. I, I think we're running the risk here of picking one topic, which, you know, arguably we've been a leader in over the last several years and we are making really positive strides in and picking that as one topic of critical. You know, I think it's an easy topic right now because it's one where you say, well, just don't add. Because once you add, it's hard to remove. So it's a very easy topic to have that conversation about right now. But I think more generally, um, we need to continue to find ways. And I, and I look forward to working over the next coming years with Melissa and, and other administrators and Maureen to figure out how do we get clearer about what is effective and what isn't? Because I think the, the larger point that Jeremy's raising, which I think is a really important point, is there are hard conversations coming up there. You can't just kind of add and then add and then add and then wait until a disaster strikes to just slash the heck out of things so that you can then go. I mean, that's traditionally how public budgets work. But I, I'd like to not work that way. I'd like us to really critically look at some of these programs and think about places where things need to be. And we've, we've talked about some of these. We don't have to go through it now. But there's a variety of places in the budget where if you look across some of our contemporaries, you know, we have more things in the budget. It's not just Director of Diversity or any other department. There's a variety of things. So, you know, I think it's, it's, it's part of a broader conversation. But pretending to this specific conversation, you know, I'm, I'm very interested to see what, Melissa and Janice come up with in, in, in the coming couple of years as we think about advancing this work. So, um, but, but at the same time, I think Jeremy raises a, um, a broader, very critical point for the district.
I'll say my last piece, guys, but, uh, the reason it's a narrow focus, if, look at new business. That's what's on the agenda for tonight's discussion. New Business is the American Rescues Act Fund and then Diversity and Inclusion. So this would be the time to discuss it. That is why it's a three recommendations. That's why we're talking FMS Inclusion, Hillside Review, what that might lead to. Special education is an expensive priority and it's part of DEI. And the American Rescue Act is a small bit of funding, but that's what new business is right here.
Well, there will be an opportunity tomorrow. Melissa Smansky will be sending out an email to, um, the, the community to participate in offering their input to these preliminary, um, spends from the American Rescue Plan. And then, um, a, a public hearing will be on the 7th. And, um, so those will be opportunities and venues for, uh, community members and district employees to provide some input. And, um, I think it's, I think we need to, I, I, I feel really grateful that this money is, is coming our way, uh, in addition to the other federal funding and that which we already received from the CARES Act, the $38,000. I think, um, you know, I think none of this came easily. Of course, we do have a new, um, you know, uh, executive administration in the White House and, and new leadership at the, you know, US Department of Education. So of course that influences, um, where we are, but none of this came easy. I mean, I know that, uh, Maureen and her colleagues and Valerie and her colleagues and Melissa and her, their colleagues have been reaching out to, you know, folks, um, you know, up in Albany about what's happening. You know, I've been reaching out, um, all year to, uh, you know, Shimsky's office and Andrea Stewart-Cusson's office. I, I mean, I have a friend in Stuart Cusson's office now. I called so many times. Um, and I just think it's, um, you know, it didn't come easy. It took a lot of people really advocating for students. So I'm really grateful, um, you know, I'm grateful that we can have this discussion, that we're here in this place, um, getting this funding for our district. So I look forward to hearing how that committee makes some recommendations and then further from the community on the 7th. We have a second public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board. The second public comment period will be limited to two minutes per speaker. If you could please state your name and if you're a resident of Hastings. And at this point, you can, uh, comment to the board on any district business. Alex Dalpiaz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I was paying attention to part of the presentation and I had some questions that I would ask about the, the IS Professional Development Review at Hillside. And, you know, I'm not in a position to, to make any judgment about it because I don't know what happened last year or whatnot. But there's two questions that I'd ask. One was something, um, that came up earlier that the, the review this, of this organization at Hillside could result in the addition of a new administrative position there. And I, if I was on the board currently, I would ask the question, how often has IS done a review, this type of review, this magnitude, and not recommended a new administrative position? So that would be something worthwhile to know the answer to. And that feeds into a second point, which is, one of the things recommended tonight is, uh, additional math intervention. And I've seen how additional interventions, um, have helped both of my children struggling with, uh, ELA and math respectively. And when we add an administrative position, obviously that's less money that can be spent on the people who work most directly with the students, um, which are the teachers. And it's money away from potential other, uh, direct intervention. So I would ask, is there any process of assessment where we make a determination of what, what difference does an administrator make? You know, do we ascribe gains that are made to administrators just because those two are linked? Or is there some actual, um, metric or assessment that is made? Thank you.
I don't see any more public comment.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any comments from the Board of Education? The board has asked that I, uh, ask for a motion to go into an executive session for the purposes of discussing a personnel matter. Is there a motion to do so? I see Doug and a second. All in favor? Thank you, Valerie, Maureen and Melissa, Melissa DeLaBrera and, um, all those attending with us this evening. We do not plan to resume a public session after the executive session. Have a good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
At this point, um, members of the public that are attending this link, if you could please, um, exit the meeting and thank you for attending.
Lauren, is this going to be the executive session?
Yes, it will. Yeah, we still have, um, members of the public attending.
I can send around an exec session link if that's.
Yeah, because this would be a public thing they could join, I think, maybe.
I'm not, well, it says, uh, recording too, so I need to stop recording.